Stage July twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three at six P M. And I'd ask for a roll call to establish form, please. Clerk Osborne? Member Kelly? Member Malcheski? President Vickers here, and Member Perry is unable to attend. Do you please stand for the pledge? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Like a motion to adopt the agenda, please. Moved. Uh, didn't get who was. Thank you. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
No changes. Oh, sorry.
The one at the S B D, right?
Which one is it?
One on special and on consent. But just one item on it, correct?
Missed that memo.
You'll be quick. It's K, but. It's on K. It's okay. I should have made the note in here. So that's the one item on K that we're removing, and the rest of K goes forward. Thank you. As amended, all in favor? I opposed. Carrie's four oh one. And we have public comment for non-agenda items. We have cards, please.
Uh, Gary Kasich, you can come to the podium. You'll be followed by Steve Brown.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everybody's having a good summer. I'm Gary Kasich speaking with Sensible Laguna tonight. I hope everybody's enjoying the summer. Clearly, this about the poll. Clearly, the the city's moving forward. I think one of my other speak, one of the other speakers tonight will talk about the details, but pretty much no question that the city is moving forward in their evaluation of a of a pool somewhere. So that's good. We've got lots of activity. We're getting water for the kids, which is what's important, what the ultimate goal is, is water for the kids. Um, lots of activities, lots of update, lots of communication with them. So things are moving pretty well. Challenge given to us from this board, and I I think we're moving pretty well on it. So we're we're happy about that. I I know some of the board members want kind of a guarantee from the city that this is going to happen. That that's kind of impossible. Um, there's no guarantee that that this board's going to build a pool. There's still lots of steps to go through. Plan, sequo, sequel appeal, any resident issues. And then, of course, you know, getting the bond pass to have it funded. So directionally, I don't know what much more that the city can do to to show that they're going forward. So I hope that's taken into consideration. We're still kind of living in this desert of communication of updates. So, you know, we get to talk here, and sometimes we get a little update, sometimes we don't. Any information you can provide us is is in terms of your work plan, what's happening, what's moving forward. Hopefully, the F A Qs still get updated, some of the questions we've submitted via email from the last meeting where we didn't have questions. Hopefully, some of those get answered. We just want to be part of it. So anything we can do to be part of it or have the communication work better, let us know it works for you. We're happy to do that. This board stated several times they're data-driven as we get to kind of the pool that's there. Man, we would like to look at the same data you're looking at because the data we see, our personal observational data that we've been tracking since this started, just there's just nothing there that shows us that a fifty-meter pool is justified from a data standpoint. If that's not correct, you know, let's let's share the data and and figure out what. We talked about the fifty-meter pool last time. Uh, you were kind enough to say there's no intent to have events. That that was really important to us to know that because that's what's going to drive the intensification of use. We're a little concerned. There's not, there's really no way to codify that or to codify it for future boards. It can be reversed. So that's it's still an issue to us. If there's a way that you can sort of memorialize that, be happy to listen, but we should keep that in mind. So please, really, the the request tonight, share with us what you can, whether it be at this meeting, at other meetings. We're just anxious for information of how you're progressing. Thanks. Hope you're enjoying the summer.
So Steve Brown, please come on up. And Steve, you'll be followed by Sheri Morgan.
Okay. Thanks. Hello, everybody. Good to see you all again. Uh, when we were here last time, the meeting was pretty focused on the facilities, uh, activities, and I think a lot of progress was made there. Thank you for all the efforts in that. I know this has been bumpy, but the community definitely appreciates some of that movement and some of the conversations. The biggest piece that remains, of course, is the pool. Uh, the key driver there, as Gary just said, is where's the city? What are they doing? How are they doing it? Um, after last meeting, when some of you asked us to get involved, we did just that. We ramped up aggressively our discussions with all kinds of city. Folks, um, from the mayor to the mayor pro tem and on down to a whole bunch of other department heads and others within that. And what we found was they told us that there was a lot of active communication between them and various folks sitting up here, as well as people on your staffs as well, it sounds like. So that's fantastic news. Uh, the better news, I would say, is it's now crystal clear the city is moving ahead as aggressively as a city can move, I think. And they seem to be extremely serious about this. They're actively exploring it and trying to move quickly. Uh, you can look no further than who's heading up this effort. Uh, it starts at the very top with the mayor himself, Bob Whalen, uh, followed by the number two, Mayor Pro Tem Sue Kemp. Uh, they are leading the charge on this, full stop. That's a huge change from how this has been done in the past. Along with them, of course, you've got the city manager that speaks volumes, I think, and they're working with the Public Works Director, among a whole bunch of other folks in recreation and other departments. So there's a lot of activity happening there. Um, city officials have also reported direct contact on multiple levels, uh, with Ms. Osborne, Mr. Valoria, Mr. Dixon, and others in the district. So it's good to hear that some of those two-way discussions are are happening. That's that's really good. We also understand just this past week alone that Mayor Whalen and Mayor Pro Tem Kemp, uh, actually went and visited multiple locations to put a pool. And that activity is underway as well. Uh, the good news from that is it would take some strain off the high school, and that's fantastic because then there's a lot of things that can happen there. Uh, so we're very pleased by all of that. Um, and the bottom line is it now appears that the stars have aligned, and there now seems to be a strong likelihood. A second pool Laguna is a real possibility, seems to have significant support as well, not just from the school district, not just from the city and the city management, but also from the community. We want more water for the kids, and this is a great thing that's moving together. Um, perhaps the better news for the high school coaches and athletes is that when this occurs, it means all the time slots at the high school pool can be theirs. Uh, that would be fantastic. I'm sure if I was a high school coach, I'd love to hear that and have that, um, and those athletes as well. The community swim and younger children activities operated by.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, Sheri Morgan, you can come on up. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on on agenda items in the audience? Okay, that'll be our last speaker then.
Hi, um, I really appreciate the, um, input that was just provided. I think it's a really great display of, um, community involvement and collaboration to get a desired result, not, um, pushing on and ignoring some of the data, some of the information, certainly some of the community that has come forward. I think because of the lack of back and forth between administration and the community, and what's disappointing to hear is still a lack of, um, sharing of information from the district to the community. I have some observations, um, and some concerns and clarifications. Because there's still a lot of concern with just how did we get here? Why have we spent so much time, so much of the of the district's time? When you have brought in experts, you brought in a pool expert the last meeting that talked about how a forty-meter pool, um, would be sufficient for our community, that the only difference is four lanes. To Madame Osborne's point, it's only a million dollars, but you have to look at the longevity of it, what the annual cost. There was quotes of forty thousand dollars. Well, that builds up over time. You know, there's concern with the fact that, um, you brought in a Sequo expert, and they were talking about the different things that could throw the project into, um, being not allowed to go forward. I'm struggling for the word, sorry. Um, and there was a lot of focus on the exemptions. Why are we focusing on exemptions when we really should be focusing on what's happening within and how can we maximize our community as a whole? Um, one of the things that the project is dr- is missing that to me is a glaring, um, um, omission is solar. Now, I know from my conversations that solar is something that's being discussed, but there's no solar infrastructure talked about on the ten-year plan. There's no solar, um, um, installations being included in this ten-year plan. I mean, this is a pretty comprehensive plan, especially at the high school, and there's no mention of it. We have solar at T O W, so clearly we know the benefits, but by installing solar, you're now investing in your community because, you know, solar, when you install solar, um, you're creating kind of, you know, a net. So if the if the power goes down, we have access to solar by the 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 panels that we install. If we put the right system in, we can actually upload power back to the grid and then use it when we need it as our credit. So we're saving money. We're saving our community money. We're saving the environment. We're saving and showing our kids that we are environmentally focused. A smaller pool will do that. Solar will do that. We need to model the behavior that we're asking our students to learn about and be a part of in the coming set in the coming years, and we need to have projects like that incorporated into this, not how much bigger can it get? How much less money are we spending to get more pool, more concrete, things that we don't really need? So and there is no evidence that our population goes up, kids will come. It's also driven by having.
Thank you, Sheri.
Is that all the public comment? Thank you. We have a couple of reports. First, we have Dr. Valoria Superintendent report.
No report tonight.
And we move to our executive team, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Vickers. I'll be brief. Uh, business office is very busy right now, closing the books for last fiscal year. Um, it's our first year in the new platform from our county. Uh, it's our financial software, so it's the first time we're closing in the system. Um, so it's a little bit of a learning curve, but also illustrate how new this system is. There was a glitch this week, uh, another district, not ours, and they will not be named, accidentally hit a second comma into one of the financial lookups for a purchase order. That nor- normally would just affect your your financial system. However, what that did is it reopened almost every district's, purchase orders from last fiscal year that had already been closed. So it reencumbered all those funds, and we had to re-close them again. So we're working through it. It is a new system, but we're making progress, and, uh, I do suspect we'll be closed on time, and I look forward to another good fiscal year after this one. But, um, with that, there's a lot of good work with facilities going on. Mr. Zeta's completing. You'll see it, the sites, um, all around right now. They're all finishing up. Feels like our summers are getting shorter, but we're still able to accomplish more and more work. So, uh, appreciate his team and all the work he's doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dix. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. I'm not sure that people realize how busy you are during the summer. Mr. Conlon.
Thank you, President Vickers. Uh, I hope everyone had an opportunity to to step away, get some much-needed R and R. Uh, my team definitely took advantage of that. Um, the hiring process is in full swing at this time, as we enter the month of August, and we're actively recruiting and interviewing for our remaining, uh, certified and classified positions that are vacant for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Plenty of time to be fully staffed by the twenty-fourth. We'll be ready to go. And then I'm just to kind of speak to in alignment with the district's commitment to continuous improvement, and you'll see that on the consent calendar. On August first, we're bringing Jennifer Abrams in to to provide professional development for site and district administrators on the topic of providing effective feedback during the observation and evaluation process of staff. Over the past several years, we've worked closely, management and and union leaders, to, um, to make the evaluation process more meaningful. And this is just one more step to build upon that work to further improve the evaluation process. So we're excited for Jennifer Abrams to to join us this coming Tuesday. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Mayberry.
Yeah. Good evening. Uh, yeah, there's a lot of stuff going on with the summer school programs right now. Instructional service has been very busy the last several weeks. The K eight summer school program intervention program, uh, had about one hundred and twenty-five students. It just wrapped up last week. We're we'll have a report later on, but it's exciting to show that all of them improved in at least one or more areas, all one hundred and twenty-five students. Uh, the high school credit recovery that, uh, Mr. Wickup, uh, led, uh, that just wrapped up as well. There was, I think, eighty-seven course enrollments. There's students that, so eighty-seven courses that students received credit for, uh, as well, that they success, that were successfully in, uh, taking. Uh, we did our ninth grade, uh, E L A and jump start. Uh, that just happened as well. So eighth graders, rising eighth graders, or sorry, rising ninth graders. That's wrapped up. Lead started this week. We have over four hundred students in the first week of lead, and well, between the two weeks, sorry. Uh, individual students, I think it's around eighteen hundred different course enrollments. Uh, so that is going on right now, uh, the top of the world TK and Kinder readiness camp. Uh, that is wrapped up. That was two weeks. Uh, and now we're at El Moro doing a TK and Kinder readiness camp, uh, that started this week. Uh, and then over at El Moro as well, we just finished wrapping up yesterday, and today we did a, just a really engaging, um, workshop. It's called Edu Protocols. We've we've mentioned it here before a few times, but it's one of our signature practices for staff to use. And so they do a two-day, host a two-day academy over at El Moro. Uh, that wrapped up. We had, it was about two hundred and fifty participants there from around the country. Uh, we had about a fifteen to twenty, I think, there, uh, participating as well, including like staff like myself and Mr. Morrison, uh, there. And so we kind of wrapped that up, uh, this afternoon. So it's been really busy last few weeks, and, uh, now we're kind of shifting to get ready for the start of the year.
Thank you. That, this is a lot of students taking advantage of the summer programs. It's great. Thank you. And, um, Dr. Valoria told me you're not reporting, but thank you for being here. We have, um, our first information item under business services. We have a nutrition services update. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Vickers. I'd like to call up, uh, Laura Ciorega, and, uh, Toby Tager is here, uh, a- as needed. He's from Sidexo, um, one of our many experts from their co- company that's helped us through this past year. As you know, uh, Ms. Ciorega joined us a little less than a year ago, still filling the first year, but there's been a lot of exciting changes in nutrition beyond just the universal meals program, but actual changes to our programs as far as recipes and equipment. I'm excited to have her share a brief update with you about that tonight. So that'll turn it over.
Thank you. Thank you, President Vickers, board members, and Dr. Valoria. Let me sprinkle the last ten months very briefly. We start off with equipment updates. We're going to talk about recipe changes, details with nutrition requirement, taste testings that we've done, nutrition committees, and what's next. I'm also going to talk about briefly about the point-of-sale upgrades that we're going to have, hopefully, and sustainability. Starting off with equipment upgrades, what we've gotten through dollars from either federal level or state level, we've been able to upgrade a lot of our equipment in the kitchens. We have purchased ovens, warmers, refrigerators, freezers, smallwares, bigwares, all the goodwares. We've gotten for the kitchen, and it has been to update. For example, we had old equipment. I will mention a fryer. We had a fryer in one of the kitchens. I don't even remember when we were able to use fryers in the school districts, but we got rid of that and gave a space for all of this magical equipment that will be able to have more scratch cooking. We were already scratch cooking. However, we have more space for fresh fruits and vegetables or just storage. Our kitchens are very small, so we want to make the best of our space that we have as best as possible. We're still able to get all the food out for the kiddos. So what's coming is something that I want to point out that the high school students actually suggested, and I take that student feedback very seriously. We actually tried out pizzas at the high school as opposed to individually wrapped pizzas. We tried the big round ones, like you would get at Pizza Hut or Domino's or whatnot, and students loved them. However, we were displaying them. If you've seen the high school setup, it's basically a cold top and then a hot top. We were just putting them just out up top on the cold or the round metal plates. And students, several students were like just word to mouth, hey, what if we got a pizza warmer where we could just go and grab them ourselves? And I was like, done, we'll do that. So that'll be awesome to let the students know when they come back from summer, that that was something thanks to them. We also have to think about when we are scratch cooking, the requirements C D E sets in place for us. When it comes to breakfast, out of the five components, we have to make sure that we have three of those, and it's going to be fruits, grains, and fluid milk. Fluid milk, we always want to make sure that we have two options, chocolate and white milk. Those also have special requirements. It has to be fat-free or low-fat. Then we have grains for the students throughout the week. We want to make sure, we usually average about two ounces of grains per day. And the fruits, if you notice, there's a little B and C right there. It doesn't mean beans and chili. It means that we could basically add a little bit more of those, but not too many because we also have to keep in mind calorie intake. We can't give them too much because then we go over our calorie needs. And saturated fat, we don't really have much trouble with that. Luckily, we took out that fryer, so no more frying chicken, which we have not done. Just kidding. And we also have the hard one, the sodium target. This is the one that is a challenge. Luckily, not for breakfast. We don't have things that include a bunch of sodium, but I'll briefly touch on that on the lunch one. That's where it gets a bit more challenging. We have all the five components when we have to serve our lunch menu. It has to include fruits, vegetables, which breaks down into colors that we have to serve, which is types of vegetables for the week, grains as well, and still the fluid milk. All of it applies. We're able to do two milks. The grains stays the same ounces. Fruits and veggies, we again can serve higher quantities, the more the better. But again, we still have to keep in mind our calorie needs. Our calorie needs go up slightly, but if you notice on the sodium target, there's actually two lines. Uh, C D E lowered it a hundred milligrams even more from last year. So again, it's a challenge to not use that salt, but challenge accepted. We're still able to create these dishes that students are really enjoying, and it makes me truly happy, and they're coming about because of their feedback. Chipotle, I'm not going to make a Chipotle commercial, but I'm going to actually talk about how our most common foods from students just lunch and learns, having conversations with them, nothing official, no papers for them to fill out. What we have often is salads, burritos, and some sort of burrito bowl that just has either a rice or a noodle in it. And this is actually how many calories you would see it if it's in the quote-unquote "real world." It can vary anywhere from four hundred up to twelve hundred calories. That's definitely in the red zone for our school districts. But I like to point out that we were able to do it while meeting the requirements still. The spicy chicken burrito salad bowl was an impromptu taste test. We've done several of those. My mission for next year is actually document and have more of that feedback for you folks and data. But again, that's my own, that I'll be able to have more of that. But it's just more impromptu, having conversations with students. This one, for example, spinach, beans, chicken, bell peppers, students loved it. They liked that it was spicy. They compared it to other restaurants, like I mentioned, that Chipotle one. That's just one of many. Bosole was very surprising, challenge accepted. Bosole is usually a lot of salt, but I was like, you know what? Let's try to find one that meets the requirement. Guess what? We did. We also researched that a registered dietitian, Marengo, said that it was actually a balanced nutrient-rich soup that includes all major macronutri- nutrients, which are carbs, protein, and fats, and all the vitamins and minerals. So that was pretty awesome to be able to find one that actually met those requirements. Something very popular also as well, learning from students, is fresh parfaits that we make daily. And very simple, just the yogurt base of fruit and granola up top. Breakfast or lunch, we're able to satisfy those sweet teeth. Tuna sandwich with sliced oranges and cucumbers is another popular one. The one that I point out in this specific slide is the feedback from elementary. Kiddos told me, don't add all the extras in the tuna. And I said, okay, and it was several students. I just sit in the table with them, and they come, they're like, what are you going to put on our menu? And I said tuna, and they just said mayo and tuna. Okay, done. So we made it simple, didn't add any extras. It was still able to meet all the requirements, and fresh fruits and veggies. That has been their feedback as well. More options of fruits and veggies, which is cool because it also qualifies us for that forty forty percent scratch cooking that we've been mentioning that we're going to do for next year. Right now, we're at approximately twenty-four to twenty-eight percent, but by the end of this school year, we're going to be at forty percent, hopefully more, but forty percent is minimum. And teriyaki chicken bowl, this is just exactly just like that burrito bowl that we saw from original, that it can spike up drastically just because of the sauces and all the goodies that are in that bowl. We were able to do one exactly with meeting the requirements, and students were super fans. And I'm glad to say that the infamous salad bars came back, full effect, at all sites, except Thurston. Thurston logistically, but it's going to happen. We're thinking of how to make it happen. It's going to happen, even if it's a baby one. But we will have a salad bar there. Um, I really enjoy salad bars because it shows you what the kids, they kind of feel empowered, like I want to grab this and griss, and they know what they have to grab before they get to our staff at the register, and we have to make sure that they meet those components. So this is definitely that ownership where they're like, I know what I'm picking, and it's cool to see that. Again, it gives them that ownership of you picked your plate. Good job. Student feedback, is it going to play? It didn't. Student feedback, like I said, is very important to me as well. We've had Tuesday tastings. Again, they've all been informal. I was lucky enough to have Anakar and be there this day and record some of the feedback from the students. This is one. I'll touch briefly on what it was, but let's see. It didn't play. Oh, just kidding.
For lunch or breakfast? You so good, you got a second one? Would you have it for, uh, lunch or breakfast?
So what this tasting was, was an Uncrustable. I had a lot of requests specifically from, uh, elementary parents that they wanted peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. And I was like, ooh, we probably have students with allergies, so we got to be mindful of everyone without making anyone feel like, I have an allergy. Students also were like, can we have peanut butter and jelly sandwiches? Yeah, you can. Challenge accepted. I found a soy butter Uncrustable, and it's made in a tree nut peanut-free facility. For those that might know about allergies, that matters as well. It can't just be tree nut and peanut-free. It has to be made in a facility, and that one was it. So we will be able to serve a tree nut and peanut-free Uncrustable, which is soy butter. We also talk about nutrition committees. This is what we started again informally, and it's worked well. The students like that. They're like, we don't have to write things. You just take notes for us. And I'm like, you guys pay attention to everything. Site-based menu planning Mondays, just quick informal lunch and learns during lunch. What do you want to see on the menu? What do you like? What do you not like? I've had a lot of feedback. Elementary said, can we have like the groceries, or we just have fruit everywhere? Okay, simple changes. Student feedback is listening and implementing. That's very important to listen what they say and implement it, and give them credit for it. Featuring menu choices that they might say in the morning announcements. Students say the Pledge of Allegiance, or they'll say what's happening for the day. Maybe they can say, oh, Lulu in fifth grade, or the whole fifth grade class suggested your meal for today. So I think that's going to be very important, and we're going to start implementing that, making sure we give the kiddos credit for that. Titan, this is our P O S system. We also have our registers. We had a system that where we would do our recipes on one, and we would ring up on another one, basically several systems. Now we are able to do everything all under the same program, whether it's inventory or menu planning. A cool feature that has, that this program has, is that it tells us we're in the green for menu planning throughout the week. We don't have to enter all these formulas and all that. We just enter what food it is. Green, good. Red, no good. The most exciting is the access to nutritional information by the parents. The parent portal is more enhanced, and you're able to just click on, let's say, today, July twenty-seventh, pops up all the nutrition information, meeting the requirements still, but more details of every nutrient, every vitamin, and all that good stuff. So I think that's definitely going to be very good, as well as efficiency. Currently, our lines are long. I was like, we have a challenge. How do we get all these kiddos through so that they could eat and still enjoy their playtime? We have students enter their numbers, uh, once they get to the register. Nope, now we could just simply scan a barcode on their I D that we house. It's still safe. We keep it under our house at all times, and they get through the lines. We're going through it. We started in the summer. Kids are like, where's my card to pay? And I'm like, you don't have to pay, but okay. So they just come through the line, and we're just scanning all the I D cards. They love it, help each other out. So it's pretty awesome, and I'm very excited about that upgrade. What's next? Meatless Mondays district-wide. This one I got called out on. The elementary kiddos, I messed up a few Mondays, and I put meat on Mondays, and they're like, Mr. Lou, we don't put meat on Mondays. And I was like, oh, okay. Next year, I'm not putting meat on Mondays. But I want to try this out district-wide, even at secondary. Encourage the kids to not eat meat every single day. There's meat alternatives. Again, trial and error. If it fails, it doesn't work. We'll just go back to regular and secondary, but it doesn't hurt to try it. So we're going to try meatless Mondays district-wide. Two breakfast choices at elementary sites. Kiddos beat me to this as well. I was like, we're going to do two, but they were vocal about it. They emailed, and they said, can we have two options for breakfast and lunch? And I was like, absolutely. So again, credit to the kiddos. We're going to have two options for breakfast, and we're also planning on the lunch, but we're going to roll it out slowly, breakfast, and then we're going to plan on lunch. And again, reiterate, our increase of percentage of scratch cooking, we're again at twenty-four, twenty-eight percent now. Forty percent for sure, but again, always set the bar higher. Hopefully, we get to like fifty or sixty percent. And lastly, sustainability. I, again, kids, 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 I feel I've, if I got a dollar for every time I said it, I'd be like a good billionaire. But kids' feedback is so important when it comes to food spoilage. Food spoilage is something that we always want to maintain low, little to none if possible. And I think by listening to the students, like what they want to eat, what they like, it's very good slash smart because we'll know what they're going to eat. I still want to incorporate veggies or fruits that they might not know of or might not like because you still want to expand that horizon and be like, well, try this veggie. If you don't like it, then just let us know. We won't have it as often. But I think that's definitely going to help us with sustainability, with interacting with the students. And also, the pictures that you see here is individual packages and wrapping and all the plastic and aluminum that we have. We're trying to slowly transition into eco-friendly containers. What you see on the left is. What you see on the left is most of the time we have like some sort of bowl or a tray and we surround wrap it or we put aluminum up top. If you grab the to-go container, not only is it more efficient, you can just cover it, go. Kids might not spill it or they won't spill it. If it falls, it's still covered and safe, less spoilage. But go green, that's definitely our mission. And the end, that was sprinkles of nutrition.
Thank you. That's a lot of great information. You've made a lot of progress. Board members, you have comments or questions?
I just want to say thank you and tell you that um one of the biggest comments that I've gotten in the last couple of years of being at TOW is parents' concerns about. School lunches. So I'm really delighted to see all the progress that you're making and particularly moving toward um scratch cooking and. More fruits and vegetables and more, more choices for the kids. So thank you.
I think it's great that you're really listening to the kids. I mean, they, they know what they like. They also um I have learned will be, they're more interested in trying things than we sometimes give them credit for. And we just, if we present it with enthusiasm and you know, like you said, try it. And if you don't care for it, we won't have it that much, but it's, I was just curious because I, I pay a lot of attention to labels. Like with the tuna, are you able to find tuna that is made with process with less salt? Cause it's a lot of the things that we get at the store, they have so much sodium in them.
Yeah, it is. We have to be so mindful on everything that we purchase, whether it's that or if it's uh if we happen to have to get canned fruit. Make sure it's either in water or a hundred percent juice, not in syrup or any of that added stuff. But yes, we definitely have to check and make sure it's low.
I didn't want to cut anybody off, I jumped in there.
Thank you for living up to your reputation. As I've said ongoingly, Sedexo is the best food company I've ever worked with my forty years in higher education. And I think you often, as I use my Sedexo knives and I look in my Sedexo cookbooks that you so graciously has provided for me. As a university president, we probably don't get this as school board members, but as a president in my house, like I have all of the stuff that you, you gave me. Thank you.
I hope so.
I thank you guys for the, the presentation on the equipment upgrades. Did you guys buy things that chop? Fresh fruits and veggies, because that's really been a constraint on our, our past practices. So I know you mentioned warmers and ovens and, but do we have actual small equipment too that chops?
We actually, the staff actually was okay with just knives, just because it's not such high volume that we're like doing dice. It's just usually big chunks of something. We do have like orange slicers, but we didn't have to purchase them, we just had them on site. We just were a little slower to roll them out. So we're dusting off.
And then my follow-up question on the equipment, are there any room in those existing kitchens for um dishwashers? Like say if we wanted to go to, I like all the eco-friendly packaging, but I wonder about flatware. Um, if there would ever be a possibility to have reusable flatware that gets washed in a dishwasher.
We could definitely look into it, but I can let Jeff.
Yeah, I, I think we, we would need fairly significant renovation and moving around of existing equipment to maybe make them work in existing spaces. So it's certainly something that we could look into and it's part of our sustainability work is reducing the packaging. So yeah, that's something we'll definitely look into. Um, I just can't say for certain if they'll fit within the existing facilities as they currently are, but we can always shift things around.
It will also increase your personnel cost.
Right, yeah.
But that is one of the things that we have actually in the top of the world, we could incorporate that in the food, the new concept, right? Is to have the larger food servers building that could provide service to that extent. Cause in the current spaces, they had to add top of the world, for example, in order to accommodate some of the things they've had to carve out into their storage room. To build, which our, our staff's done an amazing job, the facilities crew. Um, but they've had to pop in and take away storage space to actually have some salad bar spaces. So we're having to like, you know, really take apart the inside of the building in order to accomplish some of those things. But if it was a long-term commitment from the board that they really wanted us to design a kitchen like that. We could do that and we can incorporate it into the master plan for Elmore as well, if that was something of the board's interest, you know, so.
I, are you done?
I want to second that, because I think as we are teaching kids about sustainability, having them, I mean, in our house, we don't throw out any plastic silverware. So I have like a drawer full of it and I just think kids are starting to recognize, we don't want to use straws, we're not, you know, it should be part of that. We shouldn't teach them about it and then give them plastic silverware in a bat, in a, in, you know, a plastic bag. So I just want to second that.
I just had another question. Besides foods that the kids take and then if we're going to recycle that with the food recycling. But as far as when you have food and then you have leftovers, how are you able to incorporate that?
Right now, luckily all the kids are eating. However, when we do have spoilage, it's low numbers. We are currently just either spoiling it or accounting for it. Sometimes when we're able to, we will take it to the shelter. If it's food safe and it's safe to take to them while we transport it, we don't want to get anybody sick. But yeah, we definitely make an effort to not just directly automatically throw it away and then just get rid of it. Or we either repurpose it, for example, if it's during breakfast, we hopefully use it somehow during lunch for sure.
That was sort of what I was thinking of, if you could, you know, like reuse it or make something else out of it. The variety soup that everything goes in. Thank you.
Do you compost anything?
At the moment.
Students are doing it. So we actually, it's one of the rollouts of our next sustainability piece. So you see uh here, the, the trash cans are, are really prevalent. Um, we will be working to kind of roll that out at all sites. The high school has some trash cans as well and, and composting bins. Um, but this next year probably will be the bigger rollout of all of that. Um, uh, to really get every site to be doing it, including staff. So we have some staff training, things that we need to make sure we're doing because it is a whole, it's not just kids. As Dr. Machesk points out, like we as adults need to be doing the same thing that are, that we expect of our students. So uh we have composting um at the district office now, we have composting bins. So we're all moving in that direction. So it's really important.
I had um two other questions regarding uh the site here at Thurston. So you mentioned the salad bar not fitting. And Dr. Laurie, your comment about pushing into top of the world reminded me of the days, I don't know if it's still in the NPR, the mobile salad bar. But is there, anyhow, that's neither here nor there. There's many solutions to put salad bars in open spaces, rooms, hallways, the courtyards, right? Would, would something like that be appropriate to address the lack of the salad bar interior space here at the site? Cause I couldn't see them not having a salad bar for another year.
No, we for sure, that one's going to be quick. It's just going to be fitting it into if you, it's like a U-turn, it's kind of like in here. And it would be housed next to, we would like have our actual salads and like our grabbing go items. So it'd be a little bit smaller, it wouldn't be as big, but we would still be able to provide like at least fruits in the front, vegetables in the back or half and half. But it's something as well, at top of the world as well. It's usually in the NPR, luckily facilities was able to speed up the process and they helped us out with creating a space. Then where we are having our salad bar in there and we will be able to hopefully have it five days a week.
Okay, okay, that's great. And then on, I did hear to Dr. Malcheski's point. A lot of feedback about the line, the wait times at the site, at the middle school site. I don't know why it takes middle schoolers longer to get through the lunch line than all the other sites, but is the card, is that a change for this upcoming school year?
So this is for the elementary kiddos, because at the moment they're just either entering, having to remember their number. But it's also something that we're working on logistically, on how we can get the Thurston students to get on it. Or either if they carry their ID cards with them every day, we can scan those barcodes. We're def- barcodes, we're definitely going to encourage them to carry their IDs with them. Cause as long as they have their ID with them, their, their student ID, that's how our system is able to read that and we'd be more efficient that way.
I see, okay. Yeah, and I think there's also um. There's the opportunity for kids to play and come and have lunch later, it's less structured here. So maybe there's just more education of the students themselves about. If you come towards the end of the lunch period and plan accordingly, there could be no line. I don't know if that's the case or how the sites run, but there's, there's a lot of ways to manage a lunch line. You wouldn't want kids to be waiting and waiting and feel like they'd.
Yeah, the challenge is I think they're used to elementary where they have two lunches, so their, their wait time is very short. Like I literally watched them run in and run out, right? But here, it's everybody at once, right? So you, you know, anywhere between five hundred to six hundred students, you know, who are lining up to get lunch all at the same time. And so there is a mad dash to get, make sure they're, you know, as close to the front of the line as possible so that you can get your choice. Because if you're at the end, you might not get what you want. But to your point, if you wait till the end, which is what some students will do or wait towards the tail end, they walk right up and get food. Right, so it's um, it's a choice thing that we're, have to balance with, right? So it's just uh, it is a challenge. Um, I think at any site where you're, you're serving everybody all at once. And not having kind of staggered time, which we can easily accomplish elementary, it's a little more challenging obviously secondary, so.
Thank you guys very much.
And if I, if I could just briefly just on the sustainability talk, because I don't want to just leave it hanging on the dishwasher. That is something that we're looking into, but please know that not dish, not having dishwashers is not impeding our sustainability efforts in that regard. Prior to the pandemic, if you recall, we used biodegradable, a hundred percent recyclable um sporks, spoons, our plates, everything was biodegradable. The pandemic shifted us to plastics due to this uh supply chain issues and shortages. Going back, we're going to continue our recyclable, biodegradable products. In the meantime, wh- while we look into the dishwashing. So it's, it's not something we're just leaving aside and not doing any sustainability work on. Um, it's, it's always been a focus for us.
Any more questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Thank you for a very informative report and a lot of progress. Thank you. Our next item is uh human resources, report a fourth quarter of uniform complaints for the Williams case settlement, item seven.
Thank you, President Vickers. At this point in time, we have no um, no complaints. I'm sorry.
Is there public comment on this item?
No.
Thank you. Is there?
No.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, it is, we, we received no complaints for fourth quarter Williams.
Thank you. Item eight, information is an uh report on transitional kindergarten. Is there public comment on this item?
No.
Thank you. Dr. Mayberry.
Thank you. I'm going to have um Ms. Kim Johnson come up, our director of early learning. Uh, we just want to share a little update on our, our new uh extended day program that we're planning for TK uh this year. As you know, we've been trying to find more ways to expand the school day uh and expand the activities that we have for students. There's, you know, lots of challenges with COVID and along the way and then labor shortages. So I feel like things are getting closer where we can slowly put together more programming for, for families that are interested in that. And so this is one example, we have a, you know, a shorter TK day, but this would potentially allow us to have these families to have the students be here for our typical school day. So I'll have um Ms. Johnson speak to that.
Thank you so much for allowing me to be here to talk about our transitional kindergarten program and extending the day um for that option. Right now our TK goes in the morning and afternoon, uh morning is three hours and twenty minutes and afternoon is four hours and twenty minutes. It's a little bit longer in the afternoon because they have a lunch period. So we would like to look into extend, um expanding our extending learning options for the early learning. And um we wanted to start off with our transitional kindergarten program and offering an extended day till three thirty, Monday through Friday. Allowing the students to stay on campus until the after-school classes um are done at the elementary sites. Um, our daily schedule would include lunch, so those students would get the lunch with the PM TK students. They would also get schoolwork support. We would look into collaborating with our TK and K teachers. To create fun and engaging centers for kindergarten readiness skills that our students are still needing to expand on. We would have um indoor play in the classrooms and outdoor play as well. Because our school district is overseen by the Department of Education, we are license exempt. However, we would need to follow the community care licensing division requirements of ratios. And the students at Elmore would have to stay at Elmore for the um on-campus extended day. And the students at TOW would need to stay at TOW as well. Um, there is no new construction needed for this extended day program. However, if we were to look into modernizing the campus, we would need to meet the title five requirements. For the classroom size of thirteen fifty for TK students in the restrooms and things like that as well. Um, for the ratio requirements for staffing, one qualified staff to twelve children. If we had more than twelve children, we could have a qualified staff and an aide for fifteen. Or a qualified staff and a fully qualified aide for eighteen children. When we're looking at qualified uh staff, we're looking at six early childhood educational units. If we're looking at fully qualified, we're looking at twelve early childhood education units plus six months in classroom. These are different examples of fee schedules for um districts in the area. So they range anywhere from four twenty a month to eight hundred a month, from about nineteen hours to uh, what was it, thirty hours a week? Um, so we just kind of use these as comparisons for other programs for TK and K students. So when we're looking at um Laguna Beach Unified, we looked at the times our early start TK students would be in school. And the times that our late start TK students would be in school. So our early start would be approximately nineteen hours a week, so the time they get out till approximately three thirty. And our late start would be two ten to three thirty and then on Wednesday, they would allow for the extra hour as well. So the proposal would be for the early start five hundred and twenty-five a month and for the late start two hundred a month. And we would um hope uh for an interest of five to six students for the AM and four to five students for the PM. And we kind of base this on as TK and K students enrolled, they filled out a survey if they would be interested in after-school, before and after-school care. Um, and so we were just basing um this, these numbers on that survey. That's it, very brief. Any questions for me?
Yes, first of all, thank you. I don't really know anything about the TK program in the sense that I was a parent and experienced it. So I'm somewhat confused about um what. What we're proposing in terms of extended day. So right now we have a three hour and twenty minute session in the morning. So what would an extended day look like for those students?
So it's an after-school care program. So they would go into a separate classroom outside of their TK classroom. And we would have kind of a structured day, so maybe they would start off with some free play at centers and then.
Oh, I'm sorry, keep going.
And then maybe they would have lunch with the afternoon, uh the PM TK students, go outside for outdoor play, centers in the classroom.
And then till what ti- I'm sorry, and then till what time?
Three thirty.
So they, they would be able to come in early in the morning and stay until three thirty?
Our proposal is just after-school at this point in time, that's where we would start. So uh all the students could stay after-school till three thirty. So the AM students normally would go home or to after-school care at eleven forty-five, they could stay on campus till three thirty.
Okay, and then for the late students?
They could stay on campus till three thirty as well.
But there's no morning care for them?
Not that we're proposing at this moment, but it's something we can look into.
Okay, so I guess my question is, why do we not just have all-day TK?
I mean, classroom space requirement, so currently right now we have, I want to say twenty to twenty-two TK students at each site. And so, but each um site only has one TK designated classroom.
And we, and when we started the program, TK started now ten years ago, I want to say, in twenty thirteen-ish. The idea back then was that to have a part, a half-day program, we, I think we had kinder, kinder half-day back then as well.
Right.
Right, and so kinder went full day and then TK stayed just because of the younger age. Um, but now as we've gone forward, we've looked at different options to expand it. But um it just originally it was set up for, so families could do essentially a half-day with us.
Yeah, I mean, when I moved here, we went to private school the first year because kindergarten was half-day. So I, I think for people who want their kids, I mean, many other areas where I come from, they do TK. You know, pre, pre-K they call it, but it goes the same time in school as a regular kindergarten does.
Yeah, as we start to expand though, our age requirements going into TK, we're going to be looking at more children. So currently um starting this fall, we'll be having through April second. And then the next fall will be through June second and the next fall will be a whole year. And so we just don't have the build-out to do a full-day TK for that many students. So this would be an option to give them um care on campus without having to get on a bus to another site and still have a longer school day.
Yeah, no, I totally support this. I'm so that, thank you for that and I'm really glad that you're doing that. I am making a broader point that I think we should think about how to do TK that goes all day like kindergarten does. Because it's better for students and parents. it's better for students and parents.
Yeah, I'd add.
What are our current numbers for the fall for the two sites?
Um we have between twenty and twenty-two students at each site for TK. Because, yeah, so about ten to eleven AM and PM.
It's impressive.
Yeah, we've also, we set up a waitlist this year because we want to, you know, if there was space, we were gonna add some birthdays beyond it. Um we're not gonna have space. There's, I mean, there's a handful of spots that are available now. Some families show up, you know, the next month. Um but even the waitlist, we're seeing, we can look at their birthdays and see, and and there's a pretty extensive waitlist of families with birthdays and and May and June, July, that would love to jump into the TK program uh as is.
We can control the birth dates? I thought that was a state mandate.
Say again?
For us, so just remember, um and that's probably, I don't recall, you we filled you in on that because we did this presentation previously, but um for community-funded districts, there is no funding tied to it now for every uh for all the L- LCFF districts there is. So um right now, at the state level, there are uh two school districts that have taken this as a mandated cost complaint at the state level, which takes time. So there'll be a hearing uh in the fall, maybe. I think they were thinking early fall. Yeah, somewhere around that time period um to determine if there will be some funding that may come. Um so for us, this is just the general fund expense, so that's the other piece. We need to make sure that with the facilities master plan, if the intent is to have full-day option for us to have, that we build the facilities to meet that need, right? So um that is part of the different um variations that we've talked about and we'll bring back for the board um in September when we have our next facility study session and talk more about okay, what exactly do we want to do around the programming? Because the programming will help dictate what the size and needs are of space, so.
And I'm assuming that your estimates on expected interest was um by asking the questions about the current people who would be interested in that, and it's not everyone, obviously.
Correct, yeah. We um took a survey as students were registering for TK and K, and so this is what the parents' feedback was. Granted, this is, you know, a couple of months old, so now we're into summer, so we don't know if any of those students have already found after-school support and childcare as well.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, that's a Ms. Johnson. This is um the interest is for the these actual students for this year. It's not a survey from last year, right?
It's not a survey from last year. It's for the current twenty-three, twenty-four.
Gotcha. And so if we have staffing, we have to staff with a qualified staff person for five, four or five kids, correct? Because we're separated across sites. And then what is, and this might be a question for Mr. Conlon, but what does our staffing look like, our pool of people that have ECE units? Because those are different than um elementary school units.
Yes, as as part of this, it would be um we'd need to create a new position that would have the specific qualification, then recruit for that. Um that also would have to go through like the six-ten process, the CCA process. We we anticipate, then would then the board, then the position would have to come back after it goes through the six-ten process and approved by the union. It would come back to the board probably in the middle of the 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 late September board meeting, and then we'd be able to recruit after that. So it could be a matter of starting with some some subs in place and then um go with the more than backfilling with the the current qualified employee.
This is a part-time position at nineteen hours a week, so, right? Is that?
Well, I'm still waiting for to to meet with, once we get this disagreement, I'll be working with structural services to determine exactly what the hours per day, the position, it the need is, um giving some time on the end, beginning and end for prep and everything else. So once we have those parameters, um if it's at least a five-hour position, those those are positions that we typically have a can can do a good job of of filling. Um so if it's five hours and above, you know, and of course, if it happens to be, if if six hours is the need, that's a benefited position that's even more attractive. So again, all that still needs to get kind of fine-tuned.
Yeah, the um the interesting thing is having two two positions at each site for for four or five kids, and then um if we're already full on TK, right, we already know our TK numbers, and to your point, that was the interest level. People could have also found care already. It just, I I think it's a great idea. It just seems like we have a really small pool that we're staffing for.
The staffing could be someone that's there in the morning and continues on. I mean, the hours here are hours that that the child would be there. There could be more hours for a position for an adult. I think that's the way I would interpret that.
But I was kind of trying to flesh out with Mr.
Yeah, we're anticipating, we're anticipating uh this would, this would add one person per site for the extended day program. Uh because you, based on the estimated numbers, it doesn't look like it's gonna be more than ten. And then depending on the numbers, like I think we mentioned this, um maybe a four or a year or two ago. You know, if it's like, if we don't get a lot of interest at this point, you know, if it's at two or three kids, then obviously, it's probably not enough, not worth worth it to run it. Um but we would anticipate, we're anticipating to get into that, at least into the five to ten range, uh and then it would be feasible to run it for that. That would be one person. I think we, the hours, what we've talked about in structural services is although the program, depending on if you're early start, late start, is four or five hours a day, there's some overlap of our regular TK program, like they have some overlap time where they enter, where they go across. This person would help during that overlap time as well, so it would likely be a position that's longer than four or five hours a day, or like maybe closer to six.
I also think we haven't fully captured the survey of interest as well, too, because we may have some families who have older siblings that go to the after-school classes and the parents don't necessarily need the care, but if it's there and available for them to spend, you know, two hundred dollars a month if they're a late start, they may take us up on it, so they only have one pickup at the elementary school as well, too.
And perhaps Yes, I would agree with that. environment. Um Kim, have you guys thought about that the um the rest, the rest requirement for those kids, those four-year-olds that are on campus from eight-thirty until three-thirty?
Uh TK, there is no rest requirement at that time. If they were younger than that, there would be.
Okay, so there's no plans for any resting?
Most four-year-olds don't really like to rest. But we could have quiet time.
Okay, okay, all right.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for this update and keep us informed as we move forward. Thank you. Next, uh move to number nine, action items in the business department, and is there public, well, should we have public comment on each one? Okay, so we first have A, approval of agreement for contracted services as needed with Atkinson, Anderson, Lawyer, Rude, and Roma for legal services. Is there probably comment on this item?
Yes, I have a public comment on nine. Jerry, you marked C through E. Would you like to just give your public comment now? That's fine. No, that's fine. Is that fine with you, President Vickers?
We have a statement in our house about assuming. Um, okay, so um I wanted to speak towards items um nine A through however many letters there are, because there's a lot. E? E, that's five different attorney companies that we contract with. And I know that um I appreciate that on the agenda that it highlights the fact that um board policy states that that you must review um each organization prior to extending their contract, and so as a longstanding community member that has attended meetings here for fourteen years, um I would encourage you as a board to make sure before you approve any of these contracts that you are absolutely honest with the fact that you've reviewed the each company um established, have they been successful in representing, offering guidance? What kind of um fees have we incurred? Because I know for a while, we were tracking some of this information and our fees had gone up um in excess of fifty percent in attorney fees. I know we have an extensive um financial obligation for defending um one defending one uh verdict on abuse of power, and it was appealed many times, and that incurred quite a few legal fees. Uh I know we have increases in special needs education follow-up, and that was used to justify some of the increases at one point several years ago. But I think that we have board policies for a reason, and if you haven't thoroughly investigated each each law office and the results and the history and what kind of guidance they're really offering, um I would encourage you not to approve the contracts and and bring it back for uh further discussion. Uh because a lot of things, it seems, are made without thoroughly vetting um each situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. No other comments?
Ask for a um any board questions on this first item? Any motion or, and second?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's four oh one. B is approval of agreement for contracted services as needed with Bacon, Friedman, and Full Frost LLP for legal services. Is there public comment on this?
No.
Thank you. Board questions? Have a motion, please?
Second.
Discussion? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's four oh one. Uh C is approval of agreement for contracted services as needed with Harbottle Law Group for Legal Services. Is a public comment?
No.
Thank you. Board questions? Motion?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's four oh one. Item D, approval of agreement for contracted services as needed with McCoon and Harbor for Legal Services? Any public comment?
No.
Thank you. Board questions? Motion?
Second.
Uh and discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's four oh one. E is approval of agreement for contracted services as needed with Rutan and Tucker LLP for Legal Services. Public comment? Any board questions? Motion?
Second.
A discussion? I would just offer that by the background information we received that our staff who's involved with these various firms have felt confident in the services that we've received, and looking myself and tracking our expenses, they've been very um circumspect this last year. I think we're, and we uh have, there are specialties within these firms that we depend on. Mr. Dixon, did you have a?
Yeah, President Vickers, to that point, our budget for legal services district-wide has not changed over the past few years. The actual costs depend on what we experienced that year, right? Um in terms of the legal fees, and just to clarify, and I was hoping it was uh very clear in the the background is that these are as needed, so even though their their contracts, these are firms that we've worked with in the past, it's not guaranteeing them any work. It's gonna depend on the case or the circumstances that we're we're faced with at the time of whatever incident is uh thrown our way. So this is firms that we have worked with that have proven uh effective, and depending on what happens when the time comes, this opens up our opportunity to to choose the the firm that best serve our needs to the district.
And Jeff, this is standard practice?
Yes, and normally, we would do this as consent, but because of the discussions we've had in the past about the bylaw, I wanted to be very clear that this is, this is a very competitive way to have open contracts. You're not paying, there's no retainer, it's as-needed services, so uh we don't know what's gonna come our way in terms of lawsuits or legal defense. Um so we can always add, but we've had success with these firms that we know of, and that's why they're before you tonight, and that's why we put them in action, so we could talk through that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's four oh one. Thank you. Uh ten, action items, human resources. Is there public comment on this item? A, approval of amended employment contracts for assistant superintendent, business services, assistant superintendent, human resources, and assistant superintendent instructional services.
Uh yes, Sherry Morgan.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Um I wanted to actually make, I and can I, I think it's a little out of protocol, but I'm gonna suggest back to nutritional services to get the Thurston School students back through, give, put them a, give them a barcode on their phone. Honestly, they all carry it, so they just scan it through like you're getting on an airplane, and they can get their food. So I mean, if they have to remember a card, they're not gonna remember it, but if they have their phone, there's barcode to pay for their lunch will be on there. Anyway, um back to item nine or item ten, um I just want to, um I I um adore you all. I've known you all for a very long time. I just want to point out that while I value the services that you bring, um I I can't help but wonder that some of our salaries um are so um concerning in the sense that, um for example, our district um amount according to um the school accountability report card. For example, uh our district amount superintendent salary for two thousand twenty, twenty-one was twenty-nine, two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand. For state average for districts in the same category, it was a hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand. We have one of the lower populations, we have one of the um richest districts. So it doesn't, it doesn't go unnoticed that our salaries across the board from teachers to um the top are inflated compared to similar districts. And while this is an expensive place to live, most of our staff doesn't live here, so they're benefiting from the hard work that the that the the community members put in to inflate salaries on our district to beyond reasonable compared to similar districts. Um because if you talk about the but percent of budget for teacher salaries, our district amount is thirty-one percent, but it's also thirty-one percent for these other districts in the same category. So we're using more money to pay for our staff, right? Is that, do I understand math correctly? Sometimes I don't, so I I'm willing to admit that. I'm a very visual person. Um but I I do understand numbers when I can see them, and I think it's really um concerning that we are offering such large salaries because of where we are, not because of where the teachers are paying to live. They do a great job. I'm not saying they don't. I'm not saying they're not worthy of a great salary, but to be that inflated over other districts that are similar um is a reflection of the people that live here, not the people that work here. And I think it should be a little bit more um looked at from that um generic standpoint of teachers across the board. What kind of job are they doing? They aren't, shouldn't be paid more just because we work harder in Laguna Beach to pay our teachers. They also have great support. They don't have, they don't get shot at. They have kids that show up all the time. They have parents that participate and money that is donated like crazy, like it's water. We should not be using that just to pay our teachers. We should be putting that back into our students' education. We have great opportunities with solar and energy education, hydroponics in our in our gardens. We want to teach kids that are the twenty-first century. Let's diversify what we teach and use the money for that.
Thank you, Sherry.
Is there any other public comment on this item?
No.
Okay, there is um an oral summary of these contracts that is a government code that I need to read. Government Code Section five four nine five three C and then three. Uh this statement is being read based on the requirements of this government code. This agenda item proposes the approval of amendments to contracts of employment with three assistant superintendents. The amendments are included on the posted agenda and copies are available on request. All contract amendments establish three-year contract terms commencing July one, twenty twenty-three. The amendments provide for placement on an annual salary schedule ranging for these employees from step six at two thousand forty-six, nine-hundred-and-fifty-three, to step seven at two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty with potential increases as a result of negotiations. The amendments also continue a hundred-dollar-per-month communication stipend in lieu of the district providing a cellphone and plan, a master's degree increment of four thousand nine-hundred-and-six dollars and seventy-eight cents, a doctoral increment of two thousand five hundred dollars, and a specialized certification in of two thousand five hundred were applicable, a longevity increment of four percent of base salary beginning with the sixth year of service and a mileage allowance of two thousand four hundred. So are there board questions on this item, on these three contracts?
These have been negotiated as part of their contracts.
The salary schedule is already in existence.
Thank you.
Any, any other board questions? Ask for a motion, please?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's four oh one. Thank you. Action items, instruction eleven, um item A, approval of independent contractor agreement with Karen Junker of Restorative Best Practices to provide professional development, consulting, and coaching support to Elmore, top of the world, and Thurston Schools in an amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand. Is there public comment on this item?
No.
Thank you. Any board questions? May I have a motion, please? Discussion? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's four oh one. Uh eleven B, approval of independent contractor agreement with Real Inspiration Inc. to provide two assemblies for Thurston Middle School students in an amount not to exceed four thousand one hundred. Is there public comment on this item?
No.
Thank you. Board questions? May I ask a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Kelly, are you?
I was just going to relay comment to fellow board members that I had asked whether these people were well-received because we had some feedback, community feedback about certain things not being well-received, and these were well-received people. I think you guys were on that call. Okay. So, yes, well-received presenters. So, there you go.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries 401. Items, action items 13. This is superintendent's item A. Did I say something? 12A. Okay, 12B, thank you. I didn't do B. Maybe, I did A. 13. Did I say 13? Superintendent's approval of the minutes of June 15, 2023. Is there a comment, public comment on this?
No.
Thank you. I wanted to introduce this.
Yes, we had a member absent from the June 15 meeting, so therefore Dr. Malchesky will not be able to vote on these, and we'll lean to Epstein.
So I need a motion to approve these minutes?
Second.
And no discussion, but all in favor? Aye. Abstention? Doctor? No, just abstention. So it's, how do we do this? Three, one, one. Thank you. We have consent calendar. Do we have public comment on consent?
Yes. Sheri Morgan, can you come up for item 13?
We will only pull as board members request after public comment.
Okay. It's W? Sorry, you're going really fast. I'm impressed, but I'm also getting behind. Okay. Instructional minutes. So instructional minutes, I, I would like to know what the high school, or as you all look at this and look to approve it. I'd like someone from the board to ask, what does the instructional day look like as far as these minutes? Because while what's being presented is that each grade is meeting the ed code requirement, the high school is only over by one minute, whereas all the other schools are over by 1,000 or so on. This California Department of Education defines in-person instruction as instruction under the immediate physical supervision and control of a certified employee of the local education agency while engaged in educational activities required of the pupil. I am not sure, but I have heard rumor that some of the instructional minutes that are being counted is including homework, is including time passing, and is also including tutorial. Whereas not every student is meeting with, is, is in the tutorial class, is not getting it one-on-one instruction or FaceTime instruction because it's tutorial, and I think it's not, they're not obligated to engage, so they're not graded on it. So I think, and there are penalties if we do not meet the instructional minutes. I'd also like to point out that by only being over one minute at the high school, are we really maximizing our opportunities with our students? The high school, based on the CAS testing for last year, it showed that is the one with the highest number of students not meeting expectations or not meeting standards. I mean, in English, it was a drop of 18%, and I think math was 10. That very likely could be directly related to instructional minutes. And so I think it's really important that we, as a district that is supposed to be excelling, that we excel in all areas, including the time and attention that we focus on our students, because that would be a student-driven district. I think there's concern that we are placating the demands of the union and not reminding the union that they again are very well-paid, are in a very safe district, are in a very well-community-supported district. We need to ask more of our teachers, not less. And so if our high school is only exceeding the standards of instructional minutes by one minute, are we really going the extra mile for our students? Or are we coming in right under the radar of where we need to be? Keeping in mind the test scores, declining grades, declining population, why are we not maximizing our opportunities instead of just meeting them right where they need to be? Thank you.
Is there, is any other public comment on this?
No.
Thank you. Are there items in the consent calendar that board members would like to remove and vote on separately? Okay, then I would ask for a motion on consent calendar items. C through double B.
Second.
Is there any, okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries 401. Thank you. We have governance action items. We have our policy workshop that we recently had, and these are the policies coming forward as a first read. A is approval of first reading of board policies in the zero series and the 1,000 series. Is there public comment on this item?
Yes. 14A, Sheri, Sheri, you marked 14? It's okay. Would you like to comment on a different number? Would you like to come on 14?
14 is A through E are policies coming for first read, and F is amendment of superintendent's employment contract. Those are all under 14, but they take them each, we're taking this as just A right now.
So are you approving, I'll come up here since it's appropriate, are you approving the, the board policies tonight?
This is the first read.
So you will bring them back?
Yes.
Thank you.
So Sheri, do you want to come up on 14F, or do you want to say your comment now?
I, I do. I just.
I think we should take F when we get to F. Is that all right? We'll take F. If you're commenting on F, we'll do that when we get there.
Okay.
Because this is, this policy.
Great, thanks.
So there is no public comment on A. Okay. So are there board questions, or we reviewed these in the workshop, but we certainly can have questions come at the first read. Are you checking, or? Okay, they're up, if you want to see them up there. That's two policies. Correct? Comprehensive safety plan and district and school websites. Is there a motion to approve these as a first read? Is there a second? Are there any, is there any discussion on these? Okay, then we vote to bring them back for a second reading. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries 401. B is approval of first read of board policies in the 4,000s. And we have three policies, five policies that we're bringing back. Non-discrimination in employment, certification, personnel reduction, bargaining units, and dismissal slash suspension slash disciplinary action. Are there, is there public comment on this item?
No.
Are there board questions? Then I ask you for a motion to bring these back as a second read. Any discussion? We did good work at our workshop. Yes, Mr. Conlon?
Yeah, just to follow up on your question with board policy 4030, about when it mentioned ed joint, or at least how long it holds on to it, I did confirm that it's, what's stated in here is ed joint holds on even further than what this does. So we're in compliance in that regard.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's no other discussion, and I'd ask for the vote to bring this as a second read. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries 401. C is approval of first read of board policies in the 5,000 series. Pardon me? Two policies, weapons and dangerous instruments, mental health, and parent notification. Is there public comment on this?
No.
Thank you. Board questions? Have a motion, please, to bring these back for a second reading? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries 401. Item D is approval and first read of board policies in the 6,000 series. International exchange, high school graduation requirements, differential graduation and competency standards for students with disabilities, education for homeless children, education for foster youth. Is there board comment on, on this item? I'm public comment, sorry.
No.
Then any board questions?
What were we doing with the international student piece? Were we getting more information?
Yeah, so we are, by the time we publish this, we've gotten some information. So the, the board item that is in there is the current policy. I don't know if we could show the one that has some of the updates that we're proposing, and we'll bring that, we're going to bring that forward for the next read. But really, what, what we have found from our legal counsel is, under, under the law, it's interpreted as we need to charge something. How that is calculated is not determined. And so what we have to determine with our legal counsel is what would be, meet up the legal standard of that we're meeting the, the intent of the law, which is the per capita cost of attendance. And so, but there's no definition of that, so we're having ongoing discussions with our legal counsel, like, how much flexibility do we have on that? And then the other piece that we're mending in there is just we're adding some language regarding the board not just welcoming exchange students, but prioritizing bringing exchange students in. There was a lot of discussion that we had, and so there's an update to that language, the green highlighted one, which probably can't see from here. But so just highlighting the boards prioritizing this, and then we're looking at what flexibility we have. But this would at least, the verbiage in here allows us the flexibility to determine the calculation outside of this policy based on what our legal counsel says.
Thank you.
Jim, had you had a question before about numbers? About?
Yeah, there are some examples where the, where policies dictate that you can have, you know, no more than three, or so it, it caps it. You know, for us, it's, it's a challenging situation because as a community-funded district, we don't get LCFF dollars, so districts that are LCFF-funded, an exchange student actually gives them LCFF dollars to the state. We've had discussion, doesn't give us that same number. So, you know, we've even emailed up to this, the Department of State to kind of get guidance at the federal level around this, so that we understand the law. And, and even in their response, it's the typical lawyer response, which is, I'll read you the, the first part of the email. It says, "Schools can't charge for J1 students." History has been that they don't necessarily do that, but they can charge. So that was, I mean, in the beginning of his sentence and the end of his sentence, he, he makes the comment that they can charge. And it is a, it is a very confusing thing, I think, for community-funded districts, because this is a federal program. And so every state is funded differently, their schools are funded in a unique way. So there's just compounding law here that we're trying to navigate, and it's not as simple as I think, you know, we wish it would be. So with legal counsel, we're trying to make it somewhat flexible so that we can determine a charge that's adequate. But we can bring it back for a first read again at the next meeting, if that's, if the board's comfortable with that. And so not moving this one forward, but moving the rest forward, because I'd like a little bit more time with legal counsel to kind of talk it through. And not to have to push this one through without having a little bit more, like, understanding of what, you know, I don't want to throw a number out there. We had a number that we came up with originally when we first passed the policy years and years ago. That was very high, and, you know, yeah, a number to charge. And so we want to make sure that we're, whatever we're, we're kind of talking about is reasonable. And if we need to, we can get additional kind of opinion on it. You know, we will reach out to some of our other community-funded districts about this. Their policies limit, but we're the question is, is are their policies up to date with the law? Right? So that's something we're also trying to factor in, so.
And it's important that we discuss the importance of having international exchange students. And also, we have a wonderful company in town that does an exceptional job as far as.
Yeah, I think you threw out a number like 40.
Well, I thought we could fill all the slots, so, you know, but I don't think we should do that.
And I've been in regular conversations with Gwen, who is the person who runs that organization here in town, because she's been asking multiple times, like, when are we going to kind of revisit this, and in time for the next school year? And I said, no, we had a board policy workshop in July, there's no way it was going to be ready for this next school year. So we do have a little bit of time, obviously, for placements for next year, but it's, so if we could kind of get this wrapped up. I just don't want to rush it to bring it, have to bring it back and change it again, so.
When I was president of a small private college, I got 40 from that group of Italians, and they were just great. They added to the campus immensely.
Thank you. So I would need then a motion that approves bringing these forward for a second read with, but not 6145.6. That will come back as a first read. So, Jim, you move that? Okay. Any discussion further? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries 401. We move to approval of first read of board bylaws in the 9,000 series. Oops, I just flipped past it. Wait a sec. Governing board elections, filling vacancies, conflict of interest, board policies, meetings, and notices, agenda slash meeting materials, and meeting conduct. Is there public comment on this item?
No.
Thank you. Any board questions on these policies that we reviewed, these bylaws we reviewed? Then we need a motion to bring these back, second read? Any discussion?
So we have one minor edit to 9310 that was recommended by legal counsel, but unfortunately, we didn't get it till Saturday of, after agenda posting. So 9310, there's the last paragraph, mentioned suspension of policies, and it says, "No board policy, bylaw, or admin reg or any portion thereof shall be operative if it is found to be in conflict with applicable federal or state law or regulations or court decisions. If any portion of a policy is found to be invalid, that invalidity shall not affect other provisions of the policy." Legal counsel's recommendation is to add the well, great. There's, to add the follow, to, to strike out that sentence I just read and state, "By majority vote, comma, the board may suspend enforcement of a board policy or board bylaw on a one-time basis, comma, when enforcement of the policy or bylaw is not mandated by law." Because that's referencing the suspension. So that's his recommendation.
One-time basis.
On a one-time basis.
So Dr. Valori, to reiterate, legal counsel's recommendation on suspending policies is by a majority vote on a one-time basis?
That's, that's his recommendation for that, that paragraph of suspension of policy.
I don't have any issue with that.
Did I already have a motion on this? Are you comfortable with that, with adding that to the motion on that policy? Okay, so they can vote to bring these back for the second time. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries 401. Thank you. 14F, approval of amendment to superintendent employment contract. Public comment?
Yes, Sheri Morgan.
Hi, thank you. I wanted to circle back on a couple of things from the night, the June meeting. At the time, the discussion was who should people call if there was a problem with the project? And I had recommended Dr. Valoria. And my reasoning for that, and I wanted to circle back on that, is because as this contract shows, you're looking to extend every year, which I know is an evergreen contract, and that's pretty typical and standard procedure. But I know one of the things throughout the years that the community has been asking for is that we are community-funded. And there is no element of this review process that allows the community to see or voice their concerns or opinion about how things are being run or what their concerns are. This current project right now with the, with the pool and the administration, it's a superintendent-driven project. But we were able to get from a September 22 meeting on looking at St. Catherine's to a February meeting with an ad hoc, with an ad hoc committee formed in the middle where it was advised not to include the committee. In this, at the September meeting, it was advised not to include the community in the ad hoc committee. But yet the ad hoc committee found Member Vickers and Member Osborne, excuse me, President Vickers on this committee, but there was no community involved. I think that this project should reflect, and the outpouring from the community should reflect that this is a very involved community. They do want to voice. And when it comes to how their money is spent, I think there's too much that goes on behind closed doors. And I think that they would like to have a say in, do the contracts for our staff get approved and increased in their salary based on test scores, based on community involvement in, in the process? based on test scores, based on community involvement in, in the process, in a wide variety of things that are as relevant to education, which is the non-measurable items, but are also of opinion. And because this is a community funded district, community opinion does need to matter a lot more than it has in the last several years. Having been on the committees for a long time and welcomed, and then opposing, having an opposing view at one of them. Somehow I'm not included anymore in any board policies, bylaws, talks, conversations, committees, anything. Parents come back and say they don't feel like their voice is being heard. Students say the same thing. You know, as PTA president, two years ago, we had a whole conversation happening within a week with students about what their concerns were with the district, with the, with the school and the climate. And brought in the ADL and set up programs immediately for the kids to talk and they felt heard. This community wants a bigger voice at the table. They want a bigger input on what happens in our district and how our money is spent. And again, with no disrespect to salaries, but our salaries are massive. And they are, in some cases in our administration, higher than people that live here. That says a lot. We need to scale it back. You are on a runaway train of making.
Is there any other public comment on this item?
I know.
Are there board questions?
Am I right that our evaluation as the superintendent is based on his goals? And his goals covers most of the things that Mrs. Morgan brought up tonight.
And those goals were set in conjunction with the board?
Cute.
Any other questions? Then ask for a motion, please.
Second.
Mr. Conlon, is there that one correction on the date that we, from what we see in here, that under section two, that it's July 1, 2023 to June 30th, 2027?
Yes, it should read 2023.
Okay. And then I need to read again. The statement is being read based on the requirements of government code section 54953C3. This agenda item proposes the approval of an amendment to the contract of employment with the district superintendent. The amendment is included on the posted agenda and a copy is available on request. All contract amendments establish four-year contract terms commencing July 1, 2023. The amendment establishes a minimum annual salary of $341,768 on an, on a schedule with annual equity based increases based on the average or median step and column percentage increase given on the administrative salary schedule or as a result of negotiations. The contract also contain, continues to provide for a monthly expense allowance of $1,000 for expenses, health and welfare benefits and other fringe benefits that are provided to all other certificated management employees. 25 days of annual vacation and 12 days of annual sick leave as provided in the ed code. The amendment also includes revisions to section five, paragraph two of amendment one pertaining to conference attendance. And we all got that update and then what's posted in the conferences change. So I have a motion. Okay, any discussion? All in favor, I opposed, carries 401. Thank you. We have 15 governments reporting. A is discussion of reevaluation of 2024, 25 and 2025, 26 student calendars. Is there public comment on this item?
What, do you have a green card to bring forward? Okay, can you hand it to Dr. Valoria? This is on 15A.
Somebody did that for me. That was so cool, because that's too much for me to do. Anyway, I want to thank you for bringing this item back. I know that Dr. Mouse Chesky, yes, I've been practicing, asked to have this brought back and I, I'm hoping that you are going to uphold the concerns that were expressed at that time, that this, that we start no sooner than the week before Labor Day. That is what the community stood up for. In fact, they wanted to keep it after Labor Day. And I think with all the conversations about how lovely and quick this summer has gone is probably a direct reflection of the concerns that the people had, that the community had earlier when this calendar was originally approved. Because as I remind you, most, over 50% of the community did not want the schedule to change before Labor Day. There certainly is a definitive change in energy in our town when school starts or when Labor Day happens, because it just, all of the energy settles because the tourists have left, the thing, art affair, art events are over. But to the point with the calendar, starting it any sooner without notification of the community is really not, in my opinion, a good idea. You've had a lot of pushback on the calendar. This is about, starting that week before Labor Day is about the bare minimum that people wanted. And even then it wasn't really wanted. It was just forcibly accepted. So I know the sawdust struggles with employment because I have students that work there. There are other facilities in town that struggle with employment after our school starts because the town is still in full swing and there's not enough staffing. So I encourage you to maintain the second, whatever the option was that had the latest start possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. No other public comment?
Thank you. So this is our decision to bring this back for discussion. We're not discussing it at this point. It's just that we will revisit it. Yes. We have to do it that way because we had voted on it and approved it. So if we want to, this is the opportunity to say, if we support bringing it back with the further input that we've had and the concerns expressed over that decision that we made previously. So this is that, this is what that, the purpose of this is.
I'm for bringing it back. I got an awful lot of feedback from students and I got an awful lot of feedback from parents and PTA about the calendar and I would like to see us discuss it again.
I am opposed to bringing it back. We had a discussion. I understand that there were some concerns from the committee that made recommendations. But I feel as though there was some misunderstanding about the role of the board in those discussions. I value what the committee has to say, but I also think that the board has multiple constituents, including parents and families and the community. And we had a discussion that night where we talked about the different models that were brought forth. And we had a vote on it and I don't, at that time, I raised a number of questions about the calendar. We had a full discussion. I don't understand why we would bring it back. So I don't support doing that.
Remember Osborne?
I don't support reconsidering the motion either. I thought the board fairly thoroughly considered it. I have read the subsequent communication that's been sent to us by various different parties, including both the unions. And I appreciate all the input, but I'm, I'm not interested in reconsidering it this time.
And I am in favor of bringing it back for discussion. So we're at a stalemate on that. So do we, member absent, it's.
Recontinue it to the next meeting or?
You can, but it's kind of a push at this point, so.
Yeah, I, I have a question, like, on, on what grounds do we need to reconsider a full discussion and vote that we've had? I'm confused.
Well, I think it's a difference of opinion on board involvement in that as opposed to the board requested a committee to bring forward a recommendation. And not that we cannot deny that recommendation, but for me, I felt after the fact that I did not speak what I know to be from my experience, which is we take that recommendation. We ask those most heavily involved to come forward with that following what had been a very contentious calendar discussion and resulted in those two years that were in the second year starting now. And so I should have voted against it. But I'm saying, so when looking at that, I think that we got sidetracked by some specific needs of board members that didn't reflect what we had asked the committee to come forward with.
I don't, I don't know what the specific needs of board members were. What I, what I'm hearing in that comment is that you're saying that the job at the board is to take whatever recommendation of the teachers or in the committee. I value their recommendation, but you're telling me that I have no role as a board member except to accept the recommendation.
No, I'm not telling you that. I'm just saying that I would, I think that we got off on the wrong track on that. And we went too heavily in the way of an opinion, which I don't think reflected what we, what the assignment that was given to that committee. It's not that we don't have to take their recommendation. I just think that it, it was, I mean, you read the, the input that we got from them. I mean, that really says, you ask us to do this task, we did it. And then you say, it's not what you want.
No, that's not what happened. The committee made a recommendation. We evaluated it. Some of us asked questions about that recommendation and some of us, and I would be that person, asked questions about the calendar because I've never been through the calendar process before. I've also listened to a lot of parent comments and concerns about starting earlier in the summer. And there was no commentary or response to those questions outside of some information about what other districts do. So I don't see my job as a board member is just, I, I value the recommendation, but I don't, I think my job as a board member is to hear the recommendation and then think about other constituents because I, we have a lot of constituents. It's a community. So, you know, I feel like if we have a discussion and questions are raised and we talk about what other constituents may want, and then we have a vote and people, some people are unhappy. I, I, I think it's not a great precedent to reopen the door when there's unhappiness about a decision.
I think it's a little more complicated than that to me. It's just that we did give them a specific assignment. And they came forward with that, which reflects their work environment and what they see as meeting student needs. Well, and then they come, then they said, the board say, no, that's not what we want.
That's not, the board did not say that's not what we want. The board said, thank you for the recommendations. There, there are a lot of valid points made in this. There are also other concerns by other groups. How do we weigh those different concerns? And we talked about it. The fact that we don't accept the recommendation.
We're not supposed to be discussing this. I'm sorry that I let this go on because we're supposed to just decide if we want to re-hear it. And we have two that do and two that don't.
That's it. I think there was ample time too between when we first had the item on and when we asked for additional options to be brought forward. And we had very little input in between those two. So I really feel like we as a board.
We still can't discuss it.
Much time. Well, I'm just telling you, if you afforded everybody else a minute to say what they said.
She's not talking about what happened. She's talking about why she doesn't support the motion, reevaluating.
Yeah, we, it came as action twice and there was a good gap of time between then, of which we spent resourcing and talking to other people in the community and receiving feedback from various people, including assistant superintendents and other community members. So I don't feel like I made a wrong decision. I felt like I had ample time to study the material and reconsidering a motion of which I was prepared and, you know, comfortable with. I don't, I don't think it's a great precedent either.
I blame myself. I blame myself for voting for the motion when it originally happened because I had forgotten it was a, a committee decision made up of all the different stakeholders. If you remember, I stood up. I allowed the two of you to, as the parent members of the board, to duke it out because I thought that, you know, I, I, I was letting you do it. But I forgot that what came to us was something that was thoughtful. It was all the stakeholders that were represented.
Nobody said it wasn't thoughtful.
I'm, I'm just saying that the stakeholders that were tasked with this, that worked on for, I think, a year, that I just, I, I just forgot. And so that's the reason I, I supported it. And I meant the two of you duke it out as far as what, what you wanted.
Okay. Okay. That's why they don't have four member boards or councils. Exactly. So we have.
President Vickers, could you repeat your comment? I couldn't hear it.
That's why they don't have four member boards or councils.
Gotcha. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. So we have 15B, our board member reports.
No report.
No report.
No report.
I have no report either. I, I have a question I'd like to ask of Mr. Dixon. Is that, can I do this under reports? I have some concern about the conversation that's taking place at the city level regarding the, their contacts and communication with NCR and that site and what they are passing on as their plans to do. And in a sense, I would just hope that any future discussions that we have a representative involved in those discussions.
So could you repeat the, what was the acronym? NCR?
Go to 15C.
All right. So my report, we met with the city manager and one of the council folks regarding the National Church Residences, also known as NCR. And we're not ready yet to provide an update to the board. We're still waiting for legal opinion on a couple of the matters that were brought forward. And so, but we will provide the board as, as directed from our joint meeting, provide you an update related to that property, which is the Lisa property. So I recognize your concerns regarding that. It is, it is a confusing piece because the, the property obviously is not owned by us at this juncture. We would be able to get it back for a dollar. So I know they've been in conversation with NCR over the last couple of years. We have been a part of that at different times. So, and I know the city is quite interested in that location related to expanding potentially housing. But at this point, you know, we want to make sure that our legal has an opportunity to truly dig in and make sure that the advice they're going to provide you related to that property is fully vetted. So maybe our goal would be the, the August meeting, business meeting to be able to come back and provide you an update on that and potentially get some direction on next steps if you want us to do anything specific, so.
Thank you. Any other thing else to report? And I'll ask for an emotion to adjourn to our next regular meeting, which is August 17th. Thank you. All in favor, I opposed, carries 401.